Hey everyone, we are back again for our Bible study at home with First Baptist Roswell. You might notice that my setting is a little bit different this week. Unfortunately, I did not prepare hard enough on my lesson during the week to get it recorded when I normally do. And now I am at my daughter's swim meet, waiting, no spectators allowed inside. And I thought this would be the right time to just go ahead and record my lessons. So I guess I'm one of those guys now who makes YouTube videos in the car. I feel like those people are often angry or ranting about something. I'm not particularly angry. I'm just recording a Bible study. So once again, I'm glad you're here. Hope it's not too distracting as I'm sitting in my car. But I am ready to do this, excited to continue on with our Bible study on the Gospel of Matthew. And we've got a lot of material to cover today. So let's get into it. Let's review for just a little bit of where we have been. And then we'll get into our lesson for today. So week one, we saw the arrival of the King Jesus's birth. Week two, we looked at John the Baptist out in the desert baptizing people and preaching the message of repentance. And we see Jesus come to be baptized. That was his inauguration as King, coming to be baptized and getting ready to start his full-time ministry, going around preaching and teaching and healing, things like that. Before he does that, after the baptism, he goes into the desert, fast for 40 days as a time of preparation, and then is tempted by the devil. And we see what kind of ministry, what kind of Messiah he's going to be as he resists those temptations from the devil. And then we see last week, we saw the beginning of his ministry, what he was doing. He was going around preaching and teaching and healing. And as he started to get a following, crowds started to follow him around. And so he went up high on a hill and he began to preach. And we began a new unit last week where it was not so much the narrative stories about Jesus, but now we're hearing the teachings of Jesus. And this is the Sermon on the Mount, or as we are calling it in this series, the Manifesto of the King. So last week, we looked at the Beatitudes, and these were statements about who is truly blessed in God's kingdom. It's not always who we think of as truly blessed in this world, but we see who God sees as truly blessed, happy, satisfied, content. And now we are continuing on with more lessons from the Sermon on the Mount. And today, we're going to be finishing up chapter five, and it's a lot of material, but it all goes together. And it starts with this opening segment. It's Jesus's exposition on the law. Laws were something that were common to talk about back then, and they still get plenty of conversation today. We have written out laws, federal laws made by our Congress, approved by our president. And then sometimes a situation arises where these laws need further interpretation. And so they go to the courts, they go to the judicial branch to maybe interpret a situation that the people who wrote the laws weren't thinking about, or maybe it's a new, modern situation that they never even had the chance to think about. And that kind of thing happened in Jesus's day too. How does this law actually apply to our lives? What are we actually supposed to do about it? There might be times, even today, when laws are still completely ignored. I looked it up, because it's fun to do this sometimes, some old time, out of date, weird laws in Georgia. And I'm sure these things are true because I found them on the internet. I'm going to let you do all the research to actually verify them. But did you know, number one, it's illegal in Georgia to carry ice cream in your back pocket on Sundays? Apparently, back in the day, horse thieves would use the old ice cream cone in the back pocket trick to lure a horse away. You would just simply walk up to a horse, but you wouldn't actually do anything. They'd see the ice cream and they'd follow you all the way home, and then you could steal that horse. But again, it was only on Sundays. So I don't know what horse thieves were doing the rest of the week, but on Sundays, you could not do that. And that law's still on the books, apparently. Again, the internet, who knows? Number two, donkeys can't be kept in bathtubs. Did you know that? So stop keeping donkeys in your bathtubs, or I'm going to be forced to call the cops on you. More locally, residents of Acworth are legally required to own a rake. I guess they got tired of their old neighbor Bobby Joe. He kept being like, "I wish I could rake these leaves, guys, but I just don't have a rake." So they're like, "Forget it, we're not even going to get him a rake. We're just going to create a law that says everyone has to have a rake, and then he's going to have to clean up his yard, finally." And how about this one? In the city of Atlanta, it's illegal for a man to give another man a piggyback ride. So I know my friends Wallace and Al are out there watching. They're faithful followers of this Bible study lesson. So listen, guys, the next time y'all are in the city together, no more piggyback rides. I know it's, I know it's not fun, but it's just the way it has to be. It's the law. I can't help it. So I'm not going to have criminals on my Bible study. So we have seen that Jesus is preaching the good news of the gospel, and he's starting to get a following. And it seems like there might be some people saying, "Hey, this guy, you hear his new teachings? He's trying to get rid of the law. He's trying to get rid of these laws. He's trying to say that they're out of date, that they don't apply anymore." And as we read this next section, listen carefully to what Jesus is saying. Our entire text covers a lot of ground for today, but this opening section really kind of hits home what Jesus is about when it comes to the law. So reading from the book of Matthew, chapter five, verses 17 to 20, say this, "Do not think that I have come to abolish the law or the prophets. I have not come to abolish them, but to fulfill them. For truly I tell you, until heaven and earth disappear, not the smallest letter, not the least stroke of a pen will by any means disappear from the law until everything is accomplished. Therefore, anyone who sets aside one of the least of these commands and teaches others accordingly will be called least in the kingdom of heaven. But whoever practices and teaches these commands will be called great in the kingdom of heaven. For I tell you that unless your righteousness surpasses that of the Pharisees and the teachers of the law, you will certainly not enter the kingdom of heaven." So Jesus begins this section of the Sermon on the Mount with the phrase, "Do not think," which means someone probably thought it. Maybe the religious establishment just didn't care for his teachings. Maybe they're trying to say, "Hey, this guy, he's kind of teaching new things. We don't really care for that. Don't listen to him, don't listen to him. He doesn't follow the law, our sacred law handed down to us from Moses that we have always followed. He's trying to throw it out and do his own thing." And Jesus sets the record straight here. That is not the case. No, I am not trying to do that at all. One writer says this, listen to this quote, "Jesus regarded the Hebrew Bible, what we call the Old Testament, as possessing permanent validity as the word of God. Where he differed from other religious leaders was his focus on the meaning and purpose behind the laws and not merely the letter of the law." Jesus is saying here, "You think I don't believe the Bible? You think that I say things I say because I'm disregarding Scripture?" No, the exact opposite is the case. Jesus says, "I'm saying these things because I care so much about Scripture, because I love the Bible so deeply is why I'm saying these things." Jesus says, "We have long missed the point of Scripture. We have long missed the spirit behind these laws. And so I just disagree with your interpretation of it, but don't think that I'm coming to get rid of it. No, I want us to hold it even more closely." He says his mission is to fulfill the law, not abolish it. So what does that say to us today? Do you think about the relevance of the Old Testament in our lives? Jesus is saying, "If you want to understand the law, look at me. I am fulfilling it. We must understand the Old Testament in light of Jesus's life and ministry." Let me say that again. "We must understand the Old Testament in light of Jesus's life and ministry." Verse 18 talks about the stroke of a pen, not even the smallest letter. You may have heard it, it's in the King James, as "not even a jot or a tittle." In the Hebrew lettering, there were tiny little marks that would go at the edge of the letters, much like maybe just dotting an i for us today. We might say crossing all our Ts and dotting our Is, same effect. Jesus is saying, "I'm not throwing it out. I'm not even throwing the tiniest part out. One day, it will all be fulfilled. One day, the laws will no longer be needed." But until then, Jesus says, "I am fulfilling it right here. I'm not trying to get rid of any of it." Like, for instance, with the coming of Jesus, animal sacrifices were no longer needed. And one day, that will be true of all laws. But Jesus says, "I'm not getting rid of any of it, I'm fulfilling it." Verses 19 to 20 are explicitly to teachers. So I guess you all can just take a couple of minutes break. I'll just talk to myself. Maybe there are some other teachers out there listening. But what was it that Jesus always got onto the Pharisees about? About doing things for the looks? About checking religious boxes? About making sure you're just following the exact letter of the law, but completely disregarding the spirit about them? Not actually having your heart in it? That was always his beef with the Pharisees. And so he says to the people listening, "Unless your righteousness surpasses that of the Pharisees," it probably sounded pretty daunting. It probably sounded impossible. I mean, these guys dedicate their whole lives to righteousness. At least that's what the people thought. They spend every waking moment obeying the law. At least, quote, "obeying the law." They pray, they fast, they do absolutely nothing on the Sabbath. How on earth are we ever supposed to surpass that? I mean, imagine, if you are out there listening and you're a member of First Baptist Roswell, imagine if somebody says, "You can't be a part of God's kingdom unless you are more righteous than the ministerial staff at First Baptist Roswell." You would just give up right then and there. I mean, come on, more righteous than Doyle, Kevin, Jessica, Robert, and me? Wow, that's just impossible sounding, right? No, okay, I'm kidding a little bit. But I mean, these guys, people probably just would have thought, "No way. What is he talking about? We can't possibly do that." But that's not what Jesus is saying. He's saying, "Listen up. You want to know what it means to follow the law? It's not what they do. I'm going to explain it to you even further. It goes beyond external appearances. Going past the righteousness of the Pharisees is not going to be that hard if you put your heart into it, if your hearts are near God." And then we get six examples of what he is talking about. It's why we're covering so much ground in our Scripture today. Six teachings that reference the law, but then tell us the meaning and the purpose behind the law. Six times, we get a, "You have heard that it was said," and then he lists a law from the Hebrew Bible. And then six, "But I tell you," in which Jesus extrapolates on the law and takes it even further. Most preachers can only come up with like three points in their sermon. So this is why Jesus is Jesus. He comes up with six different examples, six different times, Jesus lays it down of what it means to truly love and uphold the law of God. And we're going to look at each six of these. We can only do it briefly for each one. Again, this is kind of like the Beatitudes. Each one of these could have its own lesson, could have its own sermon. We could spend an entire Bible study on each one of these. But for now, we're going to go through them briefly to kind of get this overview of what he's talking about. So let's look at the first example he gives, verses 21 and 22. He says, "You have heard that it was said to the people long ago, 'You shall not murder, and anyone murders who will be subject to judgment. But I tell you that anyone who is angry with a brother or sister will be subject to judgment.'" Again, "Anyone who says to a brother or sister, 'Rakka,' is answerable to the court. And anyone who says, 'You fool,' will be in danger of the fire of hell." So Jesus says, "Everyone knows the commandment not to murder," right? And they all nod their heads, "Yeah, I mean, it's one of the big 10. We all know, we may not know all the law like the Pharisees, but we know the big 10, right? We know murder's not good." And then he says, "But I tell you," you've heard that it was said, "Don't murder, but I tell you," and I'm sure for the listener in the crowd, there's a twinge of, "Is he getting rid of that one? Is he getting rid of murder? The law says, 'Don't murder, but,' how do you follow that with a "but?" Maybe the more erudite in the crowd think, "Ah, yes, he's, he's going to expound on the nuances of murder." You've heard that it was said, "Do not murder," but sometimes there's killing in war, that's not murder. Or sometimes there's the justification of self-defense. Perhaps he'll go into one of those philosophical ideas about what it actually means to murder. And no, instead, Jesus says, "Well, you've heard it said, 'Don't murder,' but I'm going to tell you that to even be angry with a brother or sister is a problem. If you say rakka to another person, if you name-call, then you're already sinning." And what is Jesus saying here? He is saying murder begins in the heart. So let's take it one step further and not just try to eliminate murder. Let's address the root cause of murder, and that is strife in human relationships. Rakka was a word that essentially meant idiot. The Greek word for fool is morre. And so when he says, "You fool," you know, that's where we get the word moron. But both words would have been much more objectionable back in the day than we would think today. We might just easily call someone a fool, or a moron, or an idiot. Names were incredibly important in that society. And so to name-call someone was very insulting. And Jesus is saying, "Once you have already dehumanized them, once you have taken away their name and to call them something else, to label them as something else, you've already begun committing murder in your heart." The law doesn't just demand not killing people. That's not the point of that. The purpose is to live in love with one another. He goes on to give a couple of examples of how this would work in real life, which we don't have time to read today. This is the only section we're taking out. But you should read it right after these verses. Read those sections and see what he says about, "Don't come to worship God if you're not willing to make right your relationship with your brother. Your relationship with other people," he says, "is completely tied up with your relationship with God. Don't just go through your whole life not murdering people and then think that you have accomplished the purpose of that law. The purpose of that law is to uphold the value of human life. And we do that when we live in right relationship with our brothers and sisters, not just living in an absence of physical hostility, right? And so we need to think about what that means for our own hearts as we're following God. The next one is adultery. Verse 27, "You have heard that it was said, 'You shall not commit adultery,' but I tell you that anyone who looks at a woman lustfully has already committed adultery with her in his heart. If your right eye causes you to stumble, gouge it out and throw it away. It is better for you to lose one part of your body than for your whole body to be thrown into hell. And if your right hand causes you to stumble, cut it off and throw it away. It is better for you to lose one part of your body than for your whole body to go into hell." So again, you all know the rule, no adultery. Everyone knows that one, right? Everyone knows it's not good to cheat on your spouse. But just like murder, Jesus wants to look at where the adultery starts. "Cut it out from the very beginning before it ever has a chance to take root in your heart," Jesus says. "And therefore, if it doesn't take root in your heart, it can never manifest itself in your actions." Jesus says, "To look at a woman lustfully is to already have committed adultery with her in your heart. To focus your gaze on having something that is not yours and desire it, it's kind of like murder. Your intent is already there. The intent is already in your heart. You just don't want to go to jail. You just don't want to deal with the consequences of these actions. You're just trying to, quote, "follow the law." Yeah, well, I didn't commit adultery. But Jesus says, "You just didn't have the opportunity to get away with it, or else you would have." This section here is also quite shocking for the time because who was ever punished by the authorities when it came to adultery? Do you know? It was always the woman. Remember the woman caught in adultery? There was no man around. There was no man also about to be stoned by the crowd for committing adultery. It was thought, "Oh, she tempted him. She seduced him. She made him do it. That poor guy had no chance when that woman made him commit adultery." Here, Jesus says, "No way. That's not how it works." He puts the blame equally on anyone whose heart is not in the right place when it comes to marital faithfulness. He emphasizes how serious he is about sin as he goes on to say, "If your eye is causing you to sin, cut it out. Same with your hand." He's not being literal here, but Jesus wants to make a point about just how serious this sin is. And he's saying, "If it's going to cause you to sin, root it out from the very beginning. Make sure your heart is in the right place. Take, guard your heart when it comes to these matters of lust and adultery." The next one, the next example, verse 31, "It has been said, 'Anyone who divorces his wife must give her a certificate of divorce. But I tell you that anyone who divorces his wife, except for sexual immorality, makes her the victim of adultery, and anyone who marries a divorced woman commits adultery.'" All right, we'll stop there. So this is a difficult teaching, right? Jesus is referencing Deuteronomy, chapter 24, in which a man is instructed, if he's going to divorce his wife, to give her a certificate of divorce. Men had all the power when it came to divorce. And this way, at the very least, she would have proof of her divorce. That's why she was given a certificate. But Jesus is saying, "Don't think you followed the law just because you did all the paperwork. This is about way more than paperwork. Don't think about that marriage is simply about signing a document together and then signing a document to get rid of it. We're not talking logistical issues. We're not talking about a marriage license. This is about seeing marriage the way that God sees it, as holy and sacred. As Jesus says later in Matthew, "What God has joined together, let no person separate." And just like he previously made a point to make sure everyone saw how serious sin was, he wants people to see just how important marriage is. And again, this could have a whole Bible study on the nuances behind this text. But for now, what we're going to say is, is that Jesus wants us to take marriage seriously. And there is that caveat, except for sexual immorality. So he's not saying there's nothing that can be done about serious situations. That's not what he's saying. He's saying, "Take it seriously. Make sure your heart sees marriage the way that God does." Moving on to the next one, example number four, starting in verse 33. It says, "Again, you have heard that it was said to the people long ago, 'Do not break your oath, but fulfill to the Lord the vows you have made. But I tell you, do not swear an oath at all, either by heaven, for it is God's throne, or by earth, for it is His footstool, or by Jerusalem, for it is the city of the great king. And do not swear by your head, for you cannot make even one hair white or black. All you need to say is simply yes or no. Anything beyond this comes from the evil one." So this fourth example of, "You have heard that it was said, but I tell you," talks about what it means to follow an oath, what it means to follow the law about oaths. Jesus says, "Why are you making an oath in the first place? When you have read, 'Do not break your oath,' yes, of course, if you promise to do something, you should follow through in it. But that doesn't mean you can just be dishonest the rest of the time." The Pharisees often didn't want to invoke God's name, so they might say something like, "I swear by heaven," or "I swear by earth," or maybe "by Jerusalem, that holy city," or even, "I swear on my own life, on my own head," he says. Jesus is saying, "Quit playing games with your words. Just be a person who is truthful." That's why we have the laws to point us to truth. Be a person who follows through on what they say, no matter what the words attached to it are. It's not about the rules of pinky swearing, right? Can you think of all the games that we play with truth telling? Oh, do you mean it? Are you, are you being serious? Do you mean it? "Oh, yes, I mean it, I promise. Do you swear? Yeah, I swear. Do you want a pinky swear on it? Here, give me your pinky. Okay, now I really believe you." Last week, I talked a little bit about one of my guilty pleasures. See that lesson for that one. Here's another one. I'll give you another one. Every summer, my wife and I love to watch the show Big Brother, which is essentially this situation. It's a show about these people who are locked in a house together for like months at a time, like it lasts for a few months. And slowly, each week, they vote each other out one by one. So that's all it's about, is forming together teams like that you can trust and voting the next person out. And there's really no way to win without being deceitful. I know, I mean deceitful, which I know is not good. It's just a game, so everyone kind of knows that going in. But people have to go to great lengths to convince someone else they're telling the truth. So they come up with these ways to do it. "Oh, I swear on my mother." Ooh, that's a big one. "I swear on my father's grave. Oh, I really took them seriously." When it's like, no, everyone's lying in this game. And Jesus is saying, "Let truthfulness come from your heart. Don't play these games with your words where it's like, 'I promise on this, I promise on that, I swear on this.'" Just say it truthfully from the very beginning so you don't have to have all these extra words to try and make people believe that you're telling the truth. God's not up there deducting points for, well, five points off for the pinky swear, but 15 points off for breaking the super promise. No, that's not how it works. All right, I know I'm going too long on that one. That's just, that was my example of what I thought of when I read this one. Let's move on. Last two, number five, example number five, starting in verse 38. It says, "You have heard that it was said, 'Eye for eye and tooth for tooth.' But I tell you, do not resist an evil person. If anyone slaps you on the right cheek, turn to them the other cheek also. And if anyone wants to sue you and take your shirt, hand over your coat as well. If anyone forces you to go one mile, go with them two miles. Give to the one who asks you, and do not turn away from the one who wants to borrow from you." Again, I wish we could spend an entire lesson on this one. Maybe we will someday. But the point is that an eye for an eye leaves everyone blind. Originally, in the Old Testament, this passage, an eye for an eye, was in there to limit retribution. If someone takes your eye, well, you can only take their eye. You can't go beyond that because then the cycle would just get worse and worse. But Jesus takes it one step further and says, "No retaliation at all when someone hurts you. Turn the other cheek, hand over your coat too, go the extra mile, give to the person that asks." The temptation here is to dissect these examples, right? And to try and find the exact situation when I have to turn the other cheek. But Jesus is saying, "I'm not just saying only turn the other cheek when you get slapped. It's about your heart. Where does your heart go when you are pushed beyond your limits? When someone comes after you, where does your heart go? To obey just these examples that he gives, but to ignore the rest of the situations is to be exactly what he's preaching against." All right, last one, verse 43. "You have heard that it was said, 'Love your neighbor and hate your enemy. But I tell you, love your enemies and pray for those who persecute you, that you may be the children of your Father in heaven. He causes his son to rise on the evil and the good. He sends rain on the righteous and the unrighteous. If you love those who love you, what reward will you get? Are not even the tax collectors doing that? And if you greet only your own people, what are you doing more than others? Do not even pagans do that? Be perfect therefore, as your heavenly Father is perfect." This one comes right after, "Turn the other cheek." Being a follower of Jesus means being like Jesus. And God doesn't just love some. He doesn't just love the ones who love Him, who love Him back. He loves everyone. Everyone knew the commandment from Leviticus, "You should love your neighbor as yourself," right? And so Jesus is saying, "Everyone has been saying, 'Love your neighbor.'" We all know that one. And you've been implying from that that you're supposed to hate your enemy. Well, we only have to love our neighbors, right? And Jesus is saying, "No, that's not how it works at all. Even those who you would call an enemy, as we see in the story of the Good Samaritan, are actually your neighbor, right? But Jesus, who is my neighbor? He gets asked another time when he's teaching this." And really, this is a summary of all the things that we've heard. Love your enemies, and you will naturally not try, not call him rakka. You will not try to be deceitful, or dishonest, or lustful if you truly love your neighbors. And he ends with, "Be perfect, as your heavenly Father is perfect." And again, we don't have time to go into all of that. But that perfection is more of a striving for perfection. It's more about continually trying to seek after God and to become more like Him. It's more about maturity and growth than it is about just being perfect. So I'd ask you to think about that this week. Which of these six examples really stuck out to you? Which of these do you follow the letter of the law and not really the spirit of it? Which of these do you find your heart far from? And you know that you really need to look into the spirit of your heart when it comes to how we obey Jesus's teachings? Continue to think on these things. Thanks again for joining me in my car today. I'll be, I'll try to be back in a regular room next week. We'll see how that goes. Continue to think on these things, and let's pray together as we close our Bible study. God, thanks so much for the time and these lessons, these incredible lessons that you have given us today. We pray that we would really look into our own hearts and see those places where we try and be legalistic. We tried it as squeak by following the letters of the law. to squeak by following the letters of the law, when in reality, you want us to call us into being a person who is truthful and loving and honest with others. We pray that you would continue to form our hearts into who you have called us to be, in your name that we pray. Amen.